Hey Rick.
I guess it was last week.
Do you have any public comment? Do you have something under New Business?
But there is a bigger discussion.
I have to read those two pages.
I'd like to welcome Dr. Ollie Wagner from Alfred Presbyterian Church who will lead us in our invocation.
It's good to be with you this evening and also see friends who are members of the Cambridge FFA here this evening. Last time I was here, it was for a teen suicide prevention event that I believe the city put some resources into, so thank you with the Summit Center. Thank you for that. I grabbed a prayer book, so let me offer a prayer. Almighty God, bless those who hold office in the government of the City of Milton. Peyton Jameson, Laura Bentley, Carol Cookerly, Joe Longoria, Rick Morick, Paul Moore, Mayor Joe Lockwood. Bless them to do their work with a spirit of wisdom, kindness, and fairness. Help them use their authority to serve faithfully the needs of this community. And we ask your blessing on all of the employees of this city, all who labor within its bounds, all who live in or who visit the City of Milton. Give to each one your care, your strength, your protection. And in our daily lives, we pray that you would help us to develop bonds of friendship one with another, for friendship gives life great joy. And we ask that we might have the wisdom to resolve our disagreements and differences honestly and respectfully, and use whatever talents and gifts we have for the common good. To you be all glory and honor, all power, both now and forever. Amen.
Thank you. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council from Monday, February 3rd, 2020 to order. The city strongly recommends that you review tonight's agenda carefully, and if you wish to speak on any item on the agenda, please bring your comment cards to the clerk as soon as possible. While the Milton rules allow speaker to turn in their comment card up until the clerk calls the agenda item, once the agenda item is called, no more comment cards can be accepted. Will the clerk, will the city clerk please call roll and make general announcements?
Good evening, Mayor, Pro Tem, and Council. I'll be at your call roll for the February 3rd, 2020 regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to make a public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. Your comment card must be presented to the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. All speakers, please identify yourself by name, address, and organization before beginning your comment. If you are representing an organization, an affidavit is required stating you have the authority to speak on behalf of that organization. Please review tonight's agenda, and if you would like to make a comment, please bring your comment card to me now. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited. Please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Pro Tem Peyton Jameson.
Here.
Councilmember Paul Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Laura Bentley.
Here.
Councilmember Carol Cookerly.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Councilmember Rick Morick.
Here.
For the record, Mayor Joe Lockwood is absent. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the city clerk please say on the next item?
Our next item this evening is approval of the meeting agenda, Agenda Item Number 20-024.
I'd like to make one change. I would like to move Agenda Item Number 20-030 under New Business. That's the nomination of City of Milton Equestrian Committee to after approval of meeting agenda. Do you have a motion?
Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda as read.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Bentley, a second from Councilmember Cookerly. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Will the city clerk please say on the next item?
Our next item is consideration of a resolution appointing a member to the City of Milton Equestrian Committee by appointing a board member for District 2, Post 1, Agenda Item Number 20-030. And Ms. Laura Bentley.
Mayor Pro Tem and Council, I'm very pleased to recommend for appointment Dr. Brian Maloney to the Milton Equestrian Committee. Dr. Maloney is a resident on Wood Road where he and his wife Diane have lived for 20 years and raised their three daughters. The Maloney's have a 13-acre working equestrian estate where they care for their horses and Brian competes in jumper classes at rated shows. Two of the Maloney girls ride and have competed for the UGA Equestrian Team. Brian also has served on the inaugural Trails Committee and more recently chaired the Trails Committee Update Plan. Dr. Maloney is a clinical professor with the UGA Medical School and is a practicing surgeon. Many thanks to Brian for his willingness to once again step up and serve the Milton community in this capacity.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to move that we accept Agenda Item Number 20-030, Councilmember Laura Bentley's appointee of Dr. Brian Maloney to the Equestrian Committee.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Moore and a second from Councilmember Morick. Is there any discussion on item? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Brian, I'll come swear in.
Did you ride over?
Oh, he's got.
You look fabulous, like a man who's dressed for action.
Dressed appropriately.
Very appropriately.
... How do solemn swear in front of... ...that I will faithfully perform the duties of a member of the Milton Equestrian Committee that I will faithfully perform of this city and that I will support and defend the charter thereof as well as the Constitution and laws of the State of Georgia and of the United States of America.
Sudi, is there any general public comment this evening?
We do not, sir.
Okay, so I will close the public comment and move on to the consent agenda. Will the city clerk say on the items?
First item is approval of the December 16th, 2019 regular city council meeting minutes. Agenda Item Number 20-025, Approval of Facility Solutions Agreement between the City of Milton and Centos Corporation. Agenda Item Number 20-026. Next, Approval of a Change Order Number 2 to the Professional Services Agreement for the Trail Park Planning, Design, and Construction Documents Approved, May 18th, 2018. Agenda Item Number 20-027. Next, Approval of a Contract Agreement between the City of Milton and Guardian of Georgia Inc., Doing Business as Ackerman Security Systems. Agenda Item Number 20-028. Our fifth and final consent agenda item, Approval of a Professional Services Agreement between the City of Milton and American Alarm Corporation, Inc., for Alarm Monitoring Services. Agenda Item Number 20-029.
Thank you. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as read by the clerk.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Well, there's no discussion on consent agenda, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Sudi clerk, or city clerk, next item?
Next item. This is a proclamation recognizing the 2019 American FFA Degree Recipients Megan Bybee and Grace Johnson from Cambridge High School. Mayor Pro Tem Peyton Jameson.
Good evening. I will read this proclamation, and after that, Councilmember Bentley has a few words as well. So this is a proclamation that is recognizing Megan Bybee and Grace Johnson, 2019 American FFA Degree Recipients. Whereas the National FFA Organization is an intracurricular student organization for those interested in agricultural and leadership, and is not limited to students who want to be production farmers, but also welcomes members who aspire to careers as teachers, doctors, scientists, business owners, and more. Whereas this organization remains committed to the individual student, providing a path to achievement and premier leadership, personal growth, and career success through agricultural education, and whereas the FFA motto, "Learning to do, doing to learn, earning to live, living to serve," give members words to live by, and whereas only those FFA members who have demonstrated the highest level of commitment to FFA and make significant accomplishments in their supervised agricultural experiences are eligible for the American FFA Degree, and whereas the American FFA Degree is awarded at the National FFA Convention and Expo each year to less than 1% of FFA Members, making it one of the organization's highest honors. And whereas through their commitment to scholarship and service, Cambridge High School FFA Members Megan Bybee and Grace Johnson have been awarded the 2019 American FFA Degree, and whereas they are the first FFA Degree Recipients from Cambridge High School. Now therefore, the Mayor and City Council of the City of Milton formally recognize and congratulate Megan Bybee and Grace Johnson for being 2019 FFA Degree Recipients given under our hand and seal of the City of Milton, Georgia on this third day of February 2020. Congratulations.[1164.92][1164.92](applause).
Just a quick word, 1%, y'all, that's pretty amazing. I'm incredibly proud of both of these young ladies. I've had the pleasure to know you personally and observe you in your different roles within the community, within the equestrian community. You have a wonderful family and parents that have raised you to value what you have received this award for. Also, I want to commend Mrs. White and Mrs. Nursewick for the program that you are running. You haven't been in operation that long to have a 1% American Award. I have no doubt that we will be doing many more proclamations. So congratulations and thank you for being here. I know you traveled away from your schools and you're both very good students, so please be careful driving home, and we're going to get some pictures.
Come on up. Thank you.
(inaudible).
I always do it next if the parents want it.
(inaudible).
Yeah, sure.
Just an email.
I always do it next if the parents want it.
(inaudible).
(inaudible).
I always do it next if the parents want it.
(inaudible).
Would you like it on the struts?
Just in case her scraps.
(inaudible).
Got it.
Go ahead.
(inaudible).
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 It's like the soccer.
(laughing).
(inaudible).
Weeze tight.
(inaudible).
Thank you.
That's a great achievement.
(applause).
Congratulations.
(inaudible).
Thank you, Miss Bentley.
I get to stay home.
(inaudible).
Okay, we have no items under first presentation, the public hearing, or our zoning agenda.
Moving on to unfinished business, will the city clerk please say on the first item?
This item is consideration of an ordinance to amend Appendix A Parks and Recreation Fees and Other Charges, Chapter 34, Section 24 of the Milton City Code. Agenda Item Number 20-018. First presentation was heard at the January 22nd, 2020 city council meeting. Mr. Jim Craig.
Good evening, Mayor, Pro Tem, and Council. What you have before you is consideration to add the opportunity for the City of Milton to rent out the newly acquired fields at Cox Road. The intention here is first and foremost to use the program, the field for existing programming, but where there are gaps, and we have interested parties in the community who would like to rent it, to provide a reasonable fee of $50 per hour, with a minimum of two hours rental, 75 if you want lights, again, two hours rental, $100 refundable security deposit. This would be for both the artificial turf as well as the grass fields. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Joe?
So is that regardless whether or not that they're citizens of Milton? In other words, can outside organizations, places, groups from outside of Milton rent for the same price?
Great question, sir. The way our appendix is written, we write, we list all of our fees for what it would cost a Milton resident. There's a separate line item in the Schedule A that says if you are not a Milton resident, you will pay an additional 50%.
Okay. Thank you.
And priority, if there's a competing rental request, we'll always go to the Milton resident.
Laura?
And this went before the Parks and Rec Board? Is that right?
Thank you. I neglected to add that, yes, this was vetted by the Parks and Rec Board and was passed unanimously.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Bring up for motion.
Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 20-018.
Second.
All right, I have a motion from Councilmember Bentley, a second from Councilmember Longoria. Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Thank you, Jim.
Mayor Pro Tem and Council, thank you very much. We already have people in line waiting to rent some open space. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, will the city clerk please say on the next item?
Next item is consideration of an ordinance to amend Appendix A updating fees related to door-to-door salesmen. Agenda Item Number 20-019. First presentation was heard at the January 22nd, 2020 city council meeting. Chief Rich Austin.
Greetings, Mayor, Pro Tem, members of council. If you recall back in early January, you all voted to approve several changes to the city's door-to-door solicitation ordinance. One change that we could not make at that time was the change to the fees, which live obviously in Appendix A. So what you have before you today is just a consideration to reduce our fee for a door-to-door solicitation permit from $195 to $60. It's more in line with our surrounding agencies, North Pole.
Is it appropriate from NASA's point of view? Does that apply to any organized solicitation, or is it just commercial enterprises?
Commercial nonprofits are exempt, and religious organizations are exempt, and political.
And you might have said that previously, but I just needed clarification. Thank you.
Sure. All right, any other questions? I will open up for motion.
Mr. Mayor, Pro Tem, I would make a motion that we approve Agenda Number 20-019.
Second. All right, I have a motion from Councilmember Morick and a second from Councilmember Moore. Any discussion on this item? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to new business, will the city clerk please say on the item?
Our final item this evening is consideration of a resolution of the City of Milton, Georgia opposing House Bill 302, Preemption of Local Building Design Standards. Agenda Item Number 20-031. I do have a public comment. Do we want to hear that before the presentation or after?
I don't know what we usually do, but let's go ahead and hear it. Is that okay with you all, council?
That would be Mr. Gary Jablonsky.
And this went before the Parks and Rec Board? Is that right?
Thank you. I neglected that. Yes, this was vetted by the Parks and Rec Board and was passed unanimously.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Open up for a motion.
Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 20-018.
Second. All right. I have a motion from Councilmember Bentley, a second from Councilmember Longoria. Is there any discussion? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Thank you, Jim.
Mayor Pro Tem and Council, thank you very much. We already have people in line waiting to rent some open space. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, will the city clerk please say on the next item?
Next item is consideration of an ordinance to amend Appendix A updating fees related to door-to-door salesmen. Agenda item number 20-019. First presentation was heard at the January 22nd, 2020 City Council Meeting. Chief Rich Austin.
Greetings, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. If you recall back in early January, you all voted to approve several changes to the city's door-to-door solicitation ordinance. One change that we could not make at that time was the change to the fees, which live obviously in Appendix A. So what you have before you today is just a consideration to reduce our fee for a door-to-door solicitation permit from $195 to $60. It's more in line with our surrounding agencies, North Pole.
May I ask? Is it appropriate for me to ask this question?
Yeah, go for it, Cam.
Chief, does that apply to any organized solicitation, or is it just commercial enterprises?
Commercial nonprofits are exempt, and religious organizations are exempt, and political.
And you might have said that previously, but I just needed clarification. Thank you.
Sure.
All right. Any other questions? I will open up for a motion.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I would make a motion that we approve Agenda Number 20-019.
Second. All right. I have a motion from Councilmember Moore, and a second from Councilmember Moore. Any discussion on this item? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to new business, will the city clerk please say on the item?
Our final item this evening is consideration of a resolution of the City of Milton, Georgia, opposing House Bill 302, preemption of local building design standards. Agenda item number 20-031. I do have a public comment. Do we want to hear that before the presentation or after?
I don't know what we usually do, but let's go ahead and hear it.
Okay.
Is that okay with you all, council? Okay.
That would be Mr. Gary Jablonsky.
Do I get all 10 minutes?
You get five minutes.
Five minutes.
I'm Gary Jablonsky, 2680 Grassview Drive, Milton, Georgia. I speak for myself alone. I wish to thank Mayor Lockwood for the inspiring state-of-the-city address and the department reports that were well-presented and informative. Now, regarding this resolution of the Milton opposing House Bill 302. To the City Council, I urge you, please do not underestimate the significance of this resolution. However, I'm a bit confused about the timing of the proposal. Georgia House of Representatives withdrew HB 302 on April 2nd, 2019, so why is Milton discussing this item now? With the unanimous vote of the City Council of Flowery Branch, they passed their Resolution 19-006 on March 7th, 2019, which is nearly a year ago. The Milton Resolution has many whereas clauses, but the Milton Resolution language resembles, dare I say, copied, the Flowery Branch document. I expect the City Council will consider their vote on the resolution only after thorough analysis of the underlying documents and after robust discussion at this council meeting. To the members of the council, I remember that you represent your district. Vote as you believe the majority of constituents would want. My concern is that none of the council members have reached out to their constituent base to gather their opinion on such an important matter. I'm in favor of the Milton Resolution, but no one's reached out to me to ask me my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Patrick Jogstetter.
Good evening. I'm Patrick Jogstetter. I'm not Ken Gerard, I'm one of his law partners, and I apologize if I didn't get to speak to all of you before the meeting. The resolution before you would oppose House Bill 302, and as Mr. Jablonsky said, he is correct, it was essentially withdrawn in the last legislative session. It is back, and I can tell you with our contacts at the Capitol, the real estate development community is pushing very hard to put this back in front of the House and Senate and to seek approval again. What House Bill 302 would do would be preempt local governments, cities and counties, from imposing any development standards, any development standards on residential, single-family or multifamily dwellings, essentially, single-family homes, duplexes. And it would prohibit you from things like exterior building design standards, roof pitch standards, all of the typical things you are probably doing in most of your residential rezonings to ensure the quality of construction. It is an unprecedented effort on behalf of the state to strip local governments of their traditional zoning powers. Essentially, the state grants you zoning powers, and this would be an effort to preempt you from imposing those conditions, and these are the conditions that are probably the most important to you and to your constituents when rezonings are brought to you. The resolution that is before you has been approved by a number of other cities. It has been recommended by both the Georgia Municipal Association and an alternate version by the Association of County Commissioners in Georgia, and they have urged all 159 counties and 358 cities to adopt, or 538 cities, I'm sorry, to adopt a resolution like this. Our law firm has been asked to weigh in on the constitutionality of this. I don't want to get too deep into that, but it does present some challenges, and we will weigh in as is appropriate. But this is a resolution which virtually every city and county that I'm aware of that has considered it has approved resolutions like this, very similar to this, and we would urge you to do so tonight.
And just for clarification purposes, this is almost identical to what we did last year, correct?
It's identical.
Okay.
And the reason that they appear similar to other cities is because we all got them from GMA.
Got it. Okay. Rick?
This was something in the recent GMA Cities United, when we had the Sunday sessions where they brought it up. This would, I feel strongly that we definitely need to pass it, and hopefully at the state level, it's defeated or voted down, because it does take away local control, which is one of the things that we're about, kind of controlling our own destiny and what we want to see as far as development standards. So I fully support it, and again, GMA is pushing hard, talking to all the representatives to actually get this to be defeated.
And I can tell you, if I could, this has regained some momentum at the Capitol. So we do want to make sure cities and counties make known to those in the Gold Dome what they feel about this.
Laura, do you have anything?
No, I just, I did what Councilmember Moore stated, and also, you know, our design review board and our city architect, that's the purpose of their roles and responsibilities within the city, is to make sure that we have the highest standard that is required by our citizens. So totally support last year's resolution and this year's.
Carol?
You all have, within your firm, or do you have contract lobbyists where you're dealing with this directly?
We actually work with a number of legislators through our local government involvement. You know, each local government has a delegation, a local delegation, and between the dozens and dozens of local governments that we represent, those combined legislative delegations take up a significant number of legislators, and we do work with all of them.
Could we please get a list of all state legislators that are backing the bill and who else might be? And I can get it from lobbyists with whom I work, but for this body to be able to reach out directly to them?
We can certainly make that effort. I can assure you that we'll know all of their opinions unless they voice them.
I can get it filled in. If you can give me a basic skeleton, I can do that. So that if you all want to weigh in directly, you should be able to do that, too. Not just through GMA.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion? I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution of the City of Milton, Georgia, opposing House Bill 302, preemption of local building design standards.
Second. All right. I have a motion from Councilmember Bentley, a second from Councilmember Moore. This is a motion to approve a resolution of the City of Milton, Georgia, opposing House Bill 302, preemption of local building design standards. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Moving on to council reports. Do we have any council reports? All right. None. We'll move on to staff reports.
Mayor Pro Tem, there won't be a Public Works.
Okay.
He's watching right now. He's communicating with me, but he's not going to be able to communicate with you. So if we could go right to Parks and Rec, I'd appreciate it.
Sounds good.
Mayor Pro Tem and Council, in the absence of my colleague's report, I'll do my best to double the length of my report.
Fantastic.
Want to make you aware of some things that are happening in our special needs inclusiveness activities. On Saturday, February 22nd, the cities of Johns Creek, Alpharetta, Milton, and Roswell, along with Ed Isaacson YMCA, will be holding our second Special Needs Expo. We have this timed to help parents identify what options they have for summer camps. Last one happened right at the end of July, and we recognized that families, whether they have special needs or not, families are now looking at their summer options now. And we are currently getting vendors registered to sign up, and we're expecting an even bigger camp, excuse me, a bigger expo than the last time. And then we're following up with that. There's going to be a series of four public input meetings. The first one will be held on Thursday, February 27th, here in this facility, and then on March 3rd at Johns Creek, March 11th in Roswell, and March 19th in Alpharetta, in which we'll be going out to the community, and we'll be asking folks to tell us, what are the needs in the community? We want to be able to serve the needs of the community and work together in providing solutions, so that we are being as inclusive as we can of those who have special needs. And I'm not talking to just children, we're talking to adults, teenagers, everyone. Moving on, I am most grateful at this budget year that you approved a number of our initiatives at improving the pool at the former Milton Country Club, and I wanted to give you an update on that. We have done an update, a renovation of the pump house, that is complete now. We have new fans there to help keep the temperature down and keep the chlorine gas out. We've replaced the doors and done some touch-up painting, and it looks really good. Looks really, came out very well. We ordered our own vacuums, that we are no longer dependent upon our vendor to bring a vacuum when they can, so now we can keep the pool cleaner. The pool deck resurfacing bid is now out on the street, and we are hoping to get three qualified vendors to do the resurfacing of the pool deck. Councilmember Bentley, you may recall, you had personally spoke to me about the starting blocks and getting them replaced. They have been ordered, and we have put into the pool bid that the vendor who is doing the deck has to install them as well. We felt we could save some money by buying the pool, the starting blocks separately versus the contractor buying them and putting a markup on them. New furniture. New furniture, we've gone out, we've gotten prices, we worked very closely with Stephanie Minat and Beth Wilson, who run the swim team, and we've identified furniture that, you know, we used their sense of taste and style, but still kept it neutral, because we don't know if we can change the colors. And through competitive bidding, I'm kind of excited to say this, the newest member of our team, Thomas Rhodes, was able to beat our budget number by $20,000. Though he really worked hard at that, and so we're very pleased. We are also working on improvements to Camp Joyful Souls. We came out with the idea this past year that, you know, we've had great success, but let's reorganize it, and so we've started with a SWOT analysis, and then our newly promoted Camp Joyful Souls manager is leading the effort to make changes and improvements. And the biggest single difference in an overall perspective is that the camp will be designed and organized by a person with a master's degree in special needs education, as compared to myself and Tom McElveen. Spring sports are starting up. This Saturday, the 8th, there will be a boys' lacrosse jamboree at Bell Memorial Park, and we will have well over 100 kids from some nine, 10 different teams coming out, playing a round-robin series of games. And it was a lot of fun last year, and we have a prediction of good weather. Hope I didn't just jinx it. And then we will come out and have a lot of fun. So if you can get the opportunity, please come out and see it. Baseball is starting up, and they're getting sorted out right now. I don't yet have a number on them. This is that phase of the startup of the season where they're more focused on getting all the late registrants, because of course, everyone signs up on time, and then getting all the uniforms and teams sorted out, and hopefully I'll have some numbers for them by the end of the month. I was speaking earlier to Councilman Longoria. As you may recall, we purchased the Cox Road facility on January 2nd, and on January 27th, 25 days later, we were using it. We're using it right now. I just got a call or a text from one of the coaches out there, is all excited. Lights came on on time, just like they're supposed to, so we're getting it figured out how to operate that facility. For the time being, I am calling it the Cox Road Facility. I don't know if it is the wish of this body to come up with a different name, but on an interim basis, you know, I thought that was a pretty clever name, Cox Road Facility. I thought of that myself. I'm pretty proud of that. And then the last thing, we're going to do something just a little different this year. We haven't, we didn't get to this in 2019, but we're going to have a, this coming PRAB meeting, the one in February 21st, 20th rather. We're going to do it in a workshop-style format. We will have some official business, but we're also inviting all of our program partners to come in. And what we're trying to do is foster communication, not only between the program partners, but the program partners and our Parks and Rec Advisory Board. We feel that the more communication we have, the better we understand what's doing, the better we can work together to help promote all the programs here in the city. And with that, that completes my report.
Any questions? Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
All right. Well, that will conclude our meeting. Is there a motion that we adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All right. I have a motion from Councilmember Moore, a second from Councilmember Moore. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Thank you.